Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. And please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is over to my right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have three requests for public comment. So just a reminder that public comment is for input only. It is not a question-answer session, time-for-debate or dialogue session. Members of the school board will not respond directly to public comments that are made at this meeting. No specific action will be taken at this meeting in response to comments that are made or issues that are raised during the public comment period. If the board determines action is appropriate, the action will occur at a future board meeting. And a district representative may follow up with you after the meeting. I'm going to recognize one speaker at a time. Only those speakers who are recognized will be permitted to speak. Individuals who interfere with or interrupt speakers, the board, or other proceedings may be directed to leave. And of course, personal attacks on an individual, including any other speaker during the public comment session, are unacceptable as are obscenities or profanity. And persistence in making such remarks will end the individual's opportunity to address the board and may result in the individual being directed to leave. I have my timer on my phone set for the three minutes allowed under the policy. And our first speaker is Elise Molter from North Hudson. Welcome to the meeting.
Hi.
Hi.
Thanks for letting us have public comment. I just want to address the school board in general and the administration about things that have already been happening this year. And multiple parents have been emailing and following up. And unfortunately, this stuff is relying on our students. Our children are the ones that are having to be the detectives and report the things that are lacking and that are sneaking behind the scenes. And we even get emails back from the administration saying, "Oh, I wasn't aware. I didn't know that happened. I thought we addressed that on this level." That is not acceptable at all. That is everyone's job here, everyone's job in administration. We should know exactly what's going on in the school classrooms. We should know exactly what they're getting handed to and doing on the computer. There's middle school kids that had to go on Google Classroom, fill out certain forms, address pronouns, address different things like that, and then question, "Is this okay to bring up in front of your parents?" If that doesn't send alarm bells to any of you, I don't know what any of us are doing here. For one, if parents fill out a form at the beginning and they elect their student not to get any surveys or anything like that, that's already breaking the student policy, number 333. And that is against all the state laws, and there's state laws protecting that. That is serious. And saying, "Oh, I wasn't aware that was happening," that's not acceptable. We have our teachers and have guidelines for them, and why is this happening? And when we bring up, different people bring up stuff, and everyone's like, "Well, no, that's not happening here." No, guess what? Now it's in frickin' black and white. What's going to happen? There was also on the Google Classroom for that same middle school classroom that had his, it was a personal website, and it had different things about sexually transmitted diseases on there. It had, I know you're not supposed to say profanity, but it had links to different songs called "Star the F Word," ER. I didn't want to get kicked out for saying it, but it said the whole word on there. Every page had the Hudson logo on it. This is ridiculous. And that magically got taken down. Good. Dressed it, taken it down, but what's happening because of that? How is that person not immediately taken out of there and investigated completely? The name of the artist was Boy Toy and "Star Effer." That was the song, okay? That's not okay. There's things like that happening all over. In the high schools happening, and in the middle school, half the teachers are saying, "Hey, they're sending stuff back to parents. Is this okay if we give this to the students? Is this okay?" That's great. That's what should be happening, and that's all we're asking as parents. We want to know what's happening. We don't want the bullcrap excuse that we didn't know, "Oh, sorry." No, that shouldn't be happening. These are minors. These are children. This is your job, our jobs to protect them, and sadly, we're putting that responsibility on our children to tell us what's happening. That's not okay. That's what the administration's for. That's what the school board's for. Start standing up. Start listening to parents. Start listening to kids.
Thank you for your time.
We're all together here.
Thank you. Next up is Beth Weiskopf from Hudson.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'd like to recap the first couple of days of the new school year. Day one started off with some teachers asking students their pronouns, and some going further in asking if they can use the preferred pronouns in front of their parents. What is supposed to be a great first day of school had my child asking to switch teachers in his very first class because this made him uncomfortable. When I spoke with school administration and principals, I was told teachers should not be asking this, especially not trying to hide things from parents and undermine their First Amendment rights as a parent. I was told they had addressed staff at the middle school prior to school, but not the high school. Why didn't a district-wide email go out on this to get ahead of it? I was told staff would be addressed, so it didn't continue. However, it did continue throughout that day, and it did happen at the middle school. I was told that not all staff at the middle school had a chance to be addressed. One teacher didn't understand what was wrong with it, as they had been taught this in college. Day two, admin and principal were made aware of a website a teacher had on their classroom page that had some controversial information on it. The website was blocked from students accessing it on their Chromebooks and has since been taken down. Some teachers were still asking students their pronouns and telling students their pronouns. Last week, a student deadnamed a student, and the student retaliated with violence and bloodshed. If the goal is to be inclusive to all students, then the classroom should be neutral on all grounds. By trying to be inclusive to one group of students, you are offending a majority of the others. In the U.S. Department of Education, there is a department titled Protecting Student Privacy. There's a federal regulation, 34DFR Part 98, Protection of People Rights Amendment, that prevents schools from asking a child anything regarding sexual orientation, including pronouns, religious and a political affiliation, et cetera, without prior parental consent for a minor or the adult student. The regulation allows parents to file complaints if they feel their child was violated. The Hudson School District should have been ahead of the game instead of behind. Unfortunately, the damage is already done to a majority of our students. Will there be consequences for teachers who pursue their own agenda? I would like to end with a thank you to Kate Garza, Dave Grambo, and the principals of the high school and the middle school for their communication with me on my concerns at a very respectable timeframe. And I applaud the teachers in our district that are here to teach academics and leave the social junk out. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Scooter White from Hudson.
First off, I'd like to kind of echo what Beth said. Thanks to Dave and Kate Garza. I've talked to you. I know Carrie, I've talked to you as well, and some of the other principals here as well that have gotten back in a very, very timely manner, and I really do appreciate that, and thank you guys for your time in that regard. What I would like to bring up tonight is, I know that we have brought things up, different parent groups have brought things up to the district, to teachers, to administrators, and it appears that the action that's being taken is more reactive instead of proactive. What I would like to see from the teachers, from the administration, from the school district, is to have a much more proactive approach. We're sitting here talking about pronouns today. What happens tomorrow when a kid shows up and he decides that he's a cat and wants to have a litter box in the bathroom? You're smiling, but it's going to happen. And you can try and deny it as much as you want, but it's down in River Falls. It's all over the cities. It's happening, and it's going to be here. You can shake your head, too. That's fine. And really, it's about our parents' rights. We said here, we said the Pledge of Allegiance right beforehand. We talked about how this nation was built under God. There's zero of that allowed in the school, but we can have all of these different conversations about what kind of pronouns are. As an academic, that doesn't, like, I can't see how that makes any sense to you guys. You're looking at a man and say, "Okay, that's Mr. or Mrs." You have a teacher who is identifying as non-binary. What are the kids supposed to call that person? There's no district policy on it. It's like, ah, what do we do when it happens? And we don't know. I would like to see you guys take a much, much more proactive approach in that sense. As far as the parents' rights and teachers not, or teachers keeping secrets from students is absolutely wrong. It is no less creepy than me walking up to your child and say, "Here's my conservative views. You can come and talk to me about it, and you don't have to tell your parents, and I won't tell parents." If the tagline underneath is superintendent, teacher, principal, it's just as creepy, if not even more, because my expectation when I send my child to this school, in this school district, is that they are going to be safe. I don't feel like this, the school district is representative of the community right now, and I really do hope that you guys will take a much, much more proactive approach to all of the social issues that are going to start rolling down the hill, because they are coming, and we need to be prepared. Otherwise, we're going to get caught unprepared again. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up, we have Jessica Reeves from Hudson.
Slow approach. Hi, I'm Jessica.
Welcome.
Thank you. I have a daughter here at the middle school. I pulled her out of the seven mindset curriculum, and I also opted her out of all the surveys. And I would like to echo kind of what Beth and Scooter said, that, you know, the advisory teacher, Kayla Miller, has been great to work with, her counselor, Dan. Everyone's been really helpful in me asking to have her removed from that program. Anyways, so last year, when the mindset program rolled out, the email came out to the parents, and the description really stood out to me, to one of the sections. Says, "We all have belief systems that help define who we are. Where it can go wrong is when we separate ourselves from others because of those beliefs. Some create walls of anger and even hatred to isolate themselves from large segments of people who could help and benefit them." So I asked the principal, and I asked the chief school officer at the time for an example of what that meant, and they couldn't provide one. My daughter would come home from school on the days that she had the seven mindset and said, "Yep, that was another weird one, Mom." She couldn't articulate what was weird about it, but she felt like it was weird enough to say something to me. So I asked to see the remainder of the lessons. I think this was in May or April. And I chose to pull her out after having an opportunity to review them. One of them was how to be more vulnerable. Okay? Let me review the definition of vulnerable. Susceptible to physical or emotional attack or harm. Similar in danger and peril and jeopardy, at risk, unsafe, unprotected, ill-protected, unguarded, open to attack. I don't need to go on, but I don't want my daughter to be taught that she should be vulnerable. Those aren't values that we have in our home. Another one was receive gracefully. This lesson had a video accompanying it of a man who was being driven around in a car with a bullhorn yelling out compliments to people on the street. That's not acceptable behavior. I don't want to be catcalled when I'm out walking on the street. I would be very upset if my daughter was engaging in that behavior. The lesson talked about how, "Oh, did you see the people that were uncomfortable, and they didn't receive the compliment gracefully?" That's because it's weird. Okay? So I'd like to know, do we have lessons on what students are supposed to do when they receive unwanted compliments? Do we have lessons how to not be vulnerable?
All right. We're at the three-minute mark. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Next on the agenda, I'll go over, turn it over to Nick for his reports.
All right, starter school update. It's been a fairly good start to the school year. It's been nice not having to deal with the COVID stuff and the mask and everything else that went along with it, and so that's been a real positive start to the year. There's been a real positive energy with staff and with students, and so that has been great. We started on the first, which was a Thursday, so we're about, what is that, seven days, I think? Seven days. This is day eight of the school year, so things are really rolling along. We were able to staff, from a certified staff standpoint, we were able to have all of our certified staff hired for the start of the school year. We still have some open support staff positions, hourly positions, and so we're continuing, continually hiring people along those lines. The next thing in my report is WASB's regional meeting coming up at 6:00 PM on October 26th. If you want to attend the WASB regional meeting, that's a training that the Wisconsin Association of School Boards puts on, please notify Tim Minor no later than, Tim, what is it, about the 30th of September? So maybe in the next two weeks or so, so that he can get people registered and make plans for that. You have in the agenda, link to the agenda, into the board agenda is a link to the agenda for that evening. There's a registration dinner and then the meeting program that will go on. It usually is well-attended by different boards. The last couple of years, obviously, it hasn't been the case. So if you have interest in it or you have questions about it, feel free to get ahold of me, and I'm more than happy to talk you through what that is and what that looks like. And then the last piece I want to touch on is the facility planning update. We are looking, you know, continuing, as we said in the spring, that we are continuing to look at what we need to do with our facilities. Just because there was no decision to go to referendum last year doesn't necessarily mean that our facilities have just kind of miraculously fixed themselves. And so we are working with Bray, as you know, to look at different options and build on the options that the Facility Committee looked at last year. We're going to have some parent meetings coming up on the 28th and the 3rd of October. There are two different locations each night of those two nights, and what we want to do is look at some different options, get some feedback directly from parents at the elementaries, so they can kind of have the first look at what things look like. Prior to that, at the September 26th work session, we'll be going through some of the options that Bray's come up with with the board and see, you know, getting feedback from the board and looking at that and the costs associated with it. I know several of the members of the board have said, "Make sure that we have the operational cost or operational savings included and any additional referendal cost." So that's what we're working on over the next couple of weeks. From there, we would anticipate that we would hold a meeting similar to what we did at the middle school back in 2015, where we had the options for anybody in the public to come and provide feedback in, you know, a similar style type of meeting that we did with the public back in 2015. We'll also be having a website portal like we did in 2015, where people can get online. They can watch the meetings. At least one of those parent meetings will be recorded, so they can get the information and watch it if they can't make it to one of the meetings, and then there'll be an opportunity for them to submit online feedback, like we did back in 2015 as well, to make sure that we're giving as many avenues as we can. Kind of a timeline, you know, we'll continue to refine things, get feedback, and then eventually the board's going to have to decide, you know, if there's a choice of wanting to get more information from a community survey or something along those lines, the goal would be by the end of, by the end of October, essentially the board's work session to kind of let us know what that looks like, so that we can get survey out in November, so you guys can get feedback and get data collected for December, if that's the direction you choose to go. But we're continuing to look at this. As you know, last spring, we did get our enrollment projections, and the 10-year enrollment projections are kind of reinforcing what we thought was going to, things were going to look like, which is our best-case scenario, we stay steady, and worst-case scenario, we have declining enrollment over the next 10 years. So we'll continue to work through that. Any, let's see, any other questions or anything about any of the reports that I had this morning, or this evening?
Mr. President?
Yes, Ron. And so, Nick, will Bray be presenting to us the options that have been pulled together so far?
Yeah, on the 26th. Yep.
Okay. And is one of those options all six elementaries?
At this time, it's not, as we talked about at the board work session, the last board work session and previous. It doesn't seem to be a viable option to maintain 2,900 seats in the district with only 2,100 elementary students.
Yeah, I think it's something that we'll need to continue to talk about.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions of Nick, of any of the three items he brought up? I know I, for one, will go to the WASB meeting. It's actually open on my calendar at this time, but we've got, looks like, a couple meetings between now and then in which we can indicate to Tim Minor where we're going. We'll talk about ride sharing later. All right. Now, hearing any other questions, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the two August meetings, and using the expenditures' language.
Mr. President, I move approval of the consent items and that the Chief Financial and Operations Officer be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $1,277,317.70.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's been a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposing, nay. The ayes have it, and the consent agenda is approved with the expenditures. Next up is the preliminary 2223 budget. This is the budget that we have been seeing in different forms since it was first, the first draft was introduced, I think, in March, at the March work session. But I guess turn it over to Bonnie at this time to go through some of the highlights of what the board's been discussing for the last four or five months.
All right, first time with the microphone. Am I on? All right. So, yeah, I started in July 1 of this year, but I could tell when I came in, there was a lot of work and a hard work done by the school board and the administration to prepare the budget. Where we are, there are some major assumptions for the 2223 school year. We are anticipating an increase of about 7.6% increase in equalization aid, which is about $1.5 million. That was due to a two-day extended school year in the summer of 2021-22 school year. We are projecting an increase of about 2% of our revenues, and mainly due to the levy revenue and the federal stimulus funding. As we also talked about earlier, there is an estimated reduction in the revenue limit calculation due to the three-year declining enrollment. The revenue limit calculation determines the maximum amount of funds the district is able to levy for instructional programming in the district. We are projecting expenditures to increase about 3%. Inflation over the last year has been about 9.06 based on the CPI, so there were some adjustments made to expenditures to stay within our budget. The estimated mill rate is projected to be 9.03, which is a 9% decrease from last year. It's a mill rate of 9.93, and equalized property value is estimated to increase 16.6% compared to 6% last year, and the state average was 14%. So although that's a great thing, because it'll spread out your levy, it also reduces the amount of equalization aid that the district does receive. The Hudson School District has underleveled over $126 million over the last 20 years, unfortunately, in the SIS Direct Property Tax relief for the property owners of the district. Unfortunately, this year will be the first year that there will not be an under levy, and we will be levying the full amount under our revenue limit. For salary increases, there was a range of 3.5% to 5% that were approved for staff in the district, and there was also a reduction of the levy for the community services in the district of $100,000. The next page summarizes the budget as it was compared to the adopted budget levy from the 2122 school year to the 2223 school year. There are some larger percentages, but investing earnings, obviously, due to the interest rates right now, we will, we're projecting a little more interest. Open enrollment in is also projected to go up, but also, open enrollment out is also going up a little bit. So there was a summary of that. At this point, we are projecting a balanced budget that we, for the school year. The next page summarizes a historical valuation of the levy and the mill rate in the district. As you can see, again, the estimated increase in property value is 16.6%. That is, and again, a 6% change of the levy and a 9% decrease in the mill rate. At the bottom, it gives a summary of how the equalized value, we have the early estimate it will be certified in October, is for each township in the community. And then the next several pages is a summary of the budget that the board has approved, or has reviewed over the last couple of months in work session. I don't know if people have questions about that, but it is pretty much, I think we've gone over that. And the last thing is the post-retirement benefit, trust activity. There was a slight increase in the post-retirement benefits that were put away for those.
Any questions for Bonnie? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the proposed budget and recommended levy. This will be then voted on at the annual meeting, but again, it is not final until our late October meeting, which is when we set the official levy. So we have seen that happen in years past. Things change, whether it's the economy or rules from Madison or estimates from Madison are changed, whatever. But generally, I think we've tried to stay pretty close to what we're recommending in September, since we have been watching this for about five months. Any questions or is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion by Bob, second by Heather. Is there any further discussion regarding the proposed budget and levy decrease? I'm sorry, mill rate decrease. It's an increase in the levy, but decrease in the mill rate. Anybody? All right, I'm not hearing any. All those in favor of the motion is signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Next up on our agenda will be then the district goals. Nick, do you want to take this one?
Yep, I'll go ahead and take this one. These are the same goals that you saw at the work session. They haven't changed. Took your feedback, but the recommendation from the administration would be to prove the goals as written.
Okay. Is there a motion or any questions of Nick?
Mr. President?
Yes.
And so, Nick, for the, you know, people at home and people in the audience, you know, when we look at, you know, for instance, 1.156% of students in grades three through 11 will demonstrate proficiency in English.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, to the average person, that seems low. Can you explain why that's not low?
Yeah, absolutely. Really, it's, the level of proficiency has been determined by every state ever since we've had the no child left behind. Each state gets to determine what a level of proficiency is. Wisconsin did a nice job. They set the level extremely, you know, very high. And so although there may be kids that aren't at that level, they would be still moving in the right direction. And in our goal, I think the highest level proficiency in the state, Dave, do you know what it happened to be?
When we did the norming, which was a few years ago, because we don't have all the state data, the highest was in a K-12 district, 63, 64%, somewhere in there.
So this, our goal is, is we're trying to push to be in the top 5% of school districts in the state, and it's just, it's different. And that's why you can't really compare states to states sometimes, because every state has set their own proficiency levels. I think in Wisconsin, it's been kind of about the 60th percentile. In some states, it's been the 40th percentile. There are even some states in the South that have set it much lower than that. And so it really is, you know, looking at a variety of measures, not just the forward exam, but also how are students doing on ACT? How are students doing on our other assessments, Fanta, Sponel, and also the FAST and TIR assessments that we use as well? So it's, it's a little bit misleading to say that, you know, our goal is to only have slightly more than half of our kids proficient in reading because of where the bar has been set.
Mr. President?
Yes, Heather?
No, I appreciate you raising the question, and I know typically, except for the folks here, a lot of folks would never see those goals, and I think that if they are in a place where they're out for public consumption... where they're out for public consumption, somehow incorporating that percentile piece is important. Because what, that's what, I mean, to say, we're shooting for the top fifth percentile, which to get there, we would need to get to 56%. It puts it in context, because I, I would agree, otherwise, you would look at this and think, wait, that means 44% of our kids are failing, and in fact, that's not.
Not totally.
Because of the way the system's set up, that's not what it is. So I do think if this is going to be at all external-facing, that would be good to incorporate, would be some normative data. Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely.
Other questions? And also to clarify, that goals 1.1 and 1.2, which applies to grades three through 11, so you basically average all students in all those grades to come up with that percentage.
Yep, it's a collective. And then we look at, as the Wisconsin report card looks at for us, we have, they're called gap scores, or where we're trying to close achievement gaps, and so what we've tried to do is look at a couple different, a couple different areas, and, and focus on those to continue to close the gap. We had a lot of success last year, where we made some real gains, and we look to continue to close those gaps as well this year.
Is there any other questions? Otherwise, I entertain a motion to approve the goals for the three areas of focus, which is our students, our team, and our community.
So moved.
Motion by Carrie.
Second.
A second by Molly. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the goals as stated signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay, and the ayes have it, and the goals are approved. Next up, we have an MFS fund change in authorized officers. And Bonnie, I guess you want to explain what this is, because this is not something we see necessarily every year.
Sure, this is a holding that we have for scholarship for the high school students. With Tim leaving the district, we need to have two new authorized officers, so we need an amendment or an action by the board, assigning myself and Tracy Lewis as the two individuals to make transactions for this account.
Okay. Anyone have any questions on that explanation? But this is the same item we've already discussed in the last work sessions, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. I heard a second from Carrie after Rob's motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Last on our action agenda is the 2023 German international travel proposal. Dave?
Yep, thank you very much, and we've discussed this at the work session. This is a proposal for a trip in June of 2023. It was planned previously, but due to COVID, was postponed, and ready to bring it back now, looking at between 12 to 25 students, all of which would have between two and five years of German class experience. One thing that I wanted to remind everyone was that we require all these trips to be fully insured now, so a family that signs up the money that they invest in the trip, they would be able to retrieve that money if anything should happen. There's the basic insurance that's available to all, and then we require that there's always the optional insurance that would cover for anything, for whatever reason the family would come up with, to make sure that we don't put anyone in an awkward situation.
What are the dates of travel, Dave?
It's June 12th to June 29th.
Okay.
And again, this trip is one that has been pared down. It used to be about a three-and-a-half-week trip, and pared down a little bit, and more tour-based. It still has a home visit component, but that's not the only experience that the students would have. And with that, I will consider your approval.
All right. I think I remember seeing off the students the last time, the German, but can't believe that was already three years ago. So, all right, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Molly.
Second.
And a second by Kate. Any further discussion or questions? I guess one question I had was, is this expected to become an annual thing or biannual?
That's a really good question. So right now, it's an every-other-year experience. We're having a conversation, and this is, we're just talking about it now, about looking to expand more offerings, but then look at maybe a four-year cycle, so this trip would be one, and this is just all tentative, but if we have more interest in trips, because we limit to two international trips per year. We haven't gotten to the point where we have to be competitive looking at those, but then if we get to that point, we would spread that out a little bit, with the idea that if there's a family that knows they would be interested in this trip, they could begin the fundraising early, know that it's like a junior trip, so the junior German trip, and it's just something we're considering right now, but at the very most, it would be every other year.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that, because I, I just know this is something that kids look forward to, and it's one way for them to get an international experience without doing something like my daughter did, which was a whole year between high school and college.
Yeah, and the other thing that we're looking at, too, is other fundraising mechanisms to try to make this more accessible to a broader range of students.
Very good, all right. Thanks for that explanation. Yeah, Rob?
And so, just to confirm, it says, approximate cost of the trip to individual students is $3,500 to $4,000. That's, that is paid for by the individual student's families?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. Any further questions? Otherwise...
Mr. President, maybe just a comment, and thanks for mentioning it. I would want folks to know that we did have a discussion about the fact that we recognize that these trips are pretty expensive for a lot of families in our district, and that we're going to look into maybe some other options to help make them more affordable, and/or, I know that administration has been encouraging teachers to think about travel opportunities, maybe that would be domestic, or that would be more affordable, just recognizing that that's a really big chunk of money.
Yeah. Yeah, amazingly, things are getting more expensive instead of less expensive, but I remember the choir trip, for instance, it's been an every-other-year thing until we hit COVID, but that's another experience where kids look forward to that, a couple years in advance, and maybe even a reason that they're in choir and so forth. So we like to have these opportunities, but we try to expand the base of students that can attend these. So we'll hopefully get that part of this four-year cycle that you were referencing, Dave, so. All right, any further questions, comments from board members? Otherwise, all those in favor of the motion to approve the German trip, which is set for June of 2023, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at this time.
Will do.
All right. I heard simultaneous, I'll give the motion to Heather and a second to Carrie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. We stand adjourned until the annual meeting at 7:00 PM.